We've been hearing in the context of our feelings. Yeah.
Correct.
Written to be changed. That's why I'm...
All right.
I was thinking of giving you... That was the first I think. It's a moderation. Yeah, we did not... And this would be, you know, where there would be...
You're asking all kinds of medical information, which we weren't even asking.
Probably. But in that case, he...
Yes, sir.
Very beginning. You have to release everything.
Teacher?
I was just... There was a series of...
Forever. On anybody else.
Well, I didn't think that... I didn't think I could really press a tip without having formally served a woman with something, "Give me this information."
Because on the phone, she doesn't...
She can look at her caller ID, but she doesn't know what it is.
Unless she doesn't want to sign a record because she knows it. The dates don't matter.
The dates don't matter.
I have a feeling that's behind us.
And how are you, sir? I see you judge.
Robin, how you doing, sir?
Yes, sir. How you doing?
I'm doing all right.
Good, good.
Did it turn out we had something or not? Except for what you hear.
What do we do now?
That's right. You with the ready-to-go gift. Good job.
Yeah, I know.
Well, the leadership team cohesive meeting, I mean, she was tearing up while she was saying her kind of farewells to us.
That's why I just told you.
Well, if it had just been for Kathy, she probably wouldn't have, but it is Norma Municipal Court Week, and so... This is all just some big setup.
Jerry, did Jerry say anything to you about tonight's meeting?
No. He'll want to... When we get to staff report or to get to consent, well, here, Caroline, you should listen to this too. Jerry, I think he's going to, when we get to between staff reports and consent, ask if we can postpone the meet... Or not postpone the meeting, but...
Well, I was gonna say just take or ask for a break in the meeting agenda so they can go to the Development Authority meeting and hold a Development Authority meeting to approve...
So recess the...
Okay. Recess the regular meeting so they can then do the traffic signal or authorizations from the development meeting and then go back to the regular meeting. He wanted to try to do the same thing with the recreation and leisure later on. I told him that one does not matter. Don't worry about it.
Hold on to executive session. In front of... In front of...
Oh, yes. Yes. Okay. No, no, that's fine. I don't want to...
I don't want to talk about that.
No. Yeah. If it was like, you know, you want to go do executive session now, that could have been an issue. No.
Still saying, is it really...
The...
Thankfully, we put the Development Authority meeting at 7:30. So by the time, I mean, heck, it's already 7:03 and they're still on out. Huh? I think... I don't know, work here a lot, I mean. I figure with all the presentations and everything, it would be...
It should probably go by...
Yeah, it'll probably be around 7:30 by the time they get to it. Right?
Good, man? You doing good?
Yeah.
All right.
You just got one.
No. I just went and got two.
All right. Robin, that was just him notifying us about a grant that we may want to apply for. Y'all get all those notifications from him as well.
Are we planning to?
I talked to Russell about it last week. He said he'd look at it and see if there's, you know, try to figure out if it's worth going for or not.
Is there any cost to us?
That's what he's got to figure out. For some of these, I mean, you've got, you figured it out. I mean, it's one to where the grant and then there, you know, the amount that you're actually getting or even the stuff that you're trying to get it for, is it of any use?
Did we get anything this year from him? I mean, from his service?
Not from the cops. The cops grant didn't come through. Oh, I'm trying to think there was any other...
The five, right?
Yeah, there's like five officers.
You mean the five officers that didn't go through?
No. Only like four cities in Texas even got approved. You know, they're all big cities like El Paso and Houston, so... What you got? Oh, there we go.
Was that right?
What?
You need us to go more?
Yeah.
All right.
We want to get... Oh. But Lance and him came in, Zach got them.
Did they?
They brought a Ranger with them. They brought a player with them.
They brought... So that's who that Eric or something like that was?
Some young kid. Yeah, they brought a player with them.
CJ Michael, he's... I sent, I let Jim Michael know who was, who was, we were sending, and he started going off about this one guy whose name I was, I didn't have a clue who he was.
What's going on, Robin?
And he goes, "He's a cheat." He goes, "I knew him back in high school and all kinds of stuff." So...
I thought he was a good player.
No.
We're going to have to...
Replace an HEB. Yes, third.
...break to go to those other meetings.
Which we should be proud of.
Now sort of come back.
Somehow because we had in our minds that we were going to be number one, we're not as, we're not as thrilled with it as we should be.
In the development thing before we vote over their council, even though there's...
Oh, yeah. That's where, yeah, Mayor was...
LCG and the...
They're all cheating, you know? We're not even, we shouldn't do it.
We're after regular meeting.
Yeah, we need approval in the development.
Huh?
And then come back and do them, and then go to LCG to prove that you're attractive.
We should be proud of what we did. We saw we had about 134,000 people participating for Missouri City.
So we're going to recess.
City of 70,000, so...
Where is that thing?
100% legal.
Is it on the city? I saw it's on the LGC. Is it on the...
On vegetarian. Penny let me know that I got odd of. She couldn't make it, so she said, "You don't have to make a vegetarian meal now." It's like, yes. I don't even know how to make a vegetarian.
Wait a minute.
Maybe you can buy a bag of lettuce.
Is it on the... Where is it on the city one, Jerry?
11B. It's a resolution. They're both resolutions.
Yeah, I got it.
So we just have to...
I guess postpone it.
Yeah, it's one to where you can recess the meeting between staff reports and the consent if y'all want to do the Development Authority meeting kind of at that point.
Okay.
The LGC meeting, though, you can take that action on the LGC item after the regular meeting. That's not dependent upon approval by the LGC board before you approve. Is the golf pickers under authorizations at the end?
But how about, are you saying we can take 11B during the meeting?
So...
Without going to the LGC meeting first?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, and then go to the LGC?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. All right, we'll call the meeting of City Council to order and state that the notice for this meeting was duly posted. There is a quorum of City Council. Everyone is present and if you will stand, our Elkins... Oh, what? Oh, yeah, Yolanda's not here.
Yolanda's not here.
Councilwoman Ford's not here. Stand, our Elkins High School Air Force Junior ROTC will present our colors and lead us to the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Here, re- pose. Forward, march.
Thank you. Who's doing Norma's?
Hmm?
Who's doing Norma's?
You and Kathy and Bill.
You?
And you.
Okay, Kathy, come on. You gotta do Norma's before I do yours.
You're out of here.
Huh?
Same route, I'm in here.
You gotta do yours. You gotta do Norma before I do yours.
Well, I didn't know this was a Norma.
Yeah, you can recognize her.
Thank you.
Yeah, you can recognize her.
Turn the mic around, Mayor.
I'm gonna come on up.
Come on, Norma. Don't be bashful.
Norma West is our Deputy Court Clerk slash juvenile case manager for the Missouri City Municipal Court, which is quite an undertaking in itself. But Norma was awarded at the TCCA statewide conference a month ago as a distinguished service award for what she does throughout the year for our Gulf Coast Chapter. And Norma is the hostess for the Gulf Coast Chapter, which encompasses cities from Beaumont to the Bryan area, so quite a, quite a lot of cities participate. And we're lucky...
TCCA.
TCCA.
What is it?
Oh, Texas Court Clerks Association. For those of you that don't know, thank you Judge Richter. So it's quite an undertaking to be the hostess because we have to decide what do 50 or less women want to eat and please everybody because they pay their dues and they want a good meal. But the blessing for, for those of us in Missouri City is that we get to host it in our court and we get to use the EOC large training room, which is the perfect facility to host this. And the clerks always look forward to coming to our court. We've tried to give it to other courts, but they want to be here. So we appreciate that they do that. So Norma does a fantastic job as, in her position at the court, but also as a hostess for our organization. Great job. I'm very proud of it. Thank you.
Here's the box. Where's Kathy going? Is the man at Salah going to accept this? It's a proclamation that says, "Whereas the City of Missouri City Municipal Court is a time honored and vital part of local government that has existed since 1956, and whereas the mission of the City of Missouri City Municipal Court system is to treat the citizens who appear municipal court in a courteous and efficient manner and assure them of a fair, impartial, and timely disposition of their cases. And whereas the municipal courts play a significant role in preserving the quality of life in Texas communities through the adjudication of traffic offenses, ensuring a high level of traffic safety for our citizens, and whereas the municipal judges, court administrators, clerks, bailiffs, and warrant officers continually strive to improve the administration of justice through participation in judicial education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state and local professional organizations. And whereas it's most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the 923 Texas Municipal Courts and salute their critical role in preserving public safety, protecting the quality of life in Texas communities, and deterring future criminal behavior. Now therefore, I Allen Owen, Mayor, and on behalf of the City Council and all the citizens of Missouri City, do hereby recognize the week of November the 4th through the 8th as Municipal Court Week in the City of Missouri City, Texas, and further extend appreciation to all City of Missouri City Municipal Judges and court support personnel for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to our community. I call upon all residents of the City of Missouri City to join with the City Council in recognizing the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the community they represent." So Judge, you want to come up? Any of our... Yeah. All of our court people, come back up here. Come on. Norma, come up here. Kathy? I know they thought they were done. Yeah.
Do you want us all?
Yeah, right here. Like we like each other.
Like we like each other.
Like the mayor stated, this is a week that's dedicated statewide to recognize court personnel. We are very fortunate within the City of Missouri City to have a dedicated court staff, our prosecutors, judges, and bailiffs working together. We have a bailiff, excuse me, we have a table at the court office set up with informational pamphlets, and if anybody would like to tour the court building, I welcome you to come by and see me. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy, come back up. This is Kathy's night. Right? Huh? I think I'm right under it. Anyway, we're here tonight to recognize Kathy Haney because Kathy has decided to leave the city after she's got all this great work and all these great people, but after 13 years, she's decided to get closer to home. And she's going to continue doing the same thing she's doing, but Kathy, we just wanted to say how much we appreciate what you've done for the city. And it's funny because I've known Kathy through a different source. She has a twin that, her twin and I worked together at Wells Fargo for many, many years, and they used to travel together and go to all these meetings that we'd have and people would go, "I thought I just saw you somewhere else." Because they truly are twins and she and her twin get along very well and travel a lot together. So Kathy, on behalf of all the citizens of Missouri City and the City Council and judges and your municipal staff that you have over there, we just want to say thank you for 13 years of dedication to us and away from your family and doing what, you know, you're, you've been so good at doing and getting recognized for what it is. So thank you and good luck to you. We're not gonna, you know, matter of fact, Patrice Fogarty, who left here, was our City Secretary, called me and said, "Don't blame me because I took her. Don't hold that against me, Mayor." And I said, "I won't for about two minutes." You know, so anyway, Patrice knew what she needed and she's worked with Kathy for many, many years prior to now, so she's getting a great one and we're going to miss Kathy a lot. So, and I'll help you take these stones over here. These are bookends and you're going to have to have some help.
Mine. Are they really heavy?
Well, yeah, they are. Come on, Mike. These are yours to take. Mike shared her with us for all these years, so she doesn't think they're that heavy.
They are.
Uh-huh.
Thank you, sir.
All right, Kathy, you can say something now.
Well, I'm going to try to get through this without shedding a tear, but I have Kleenex just in case. On the way here, I kept thinking of what a privilege I have had working here and just to name a few of the privileges. It's been this staff for 13 years. We've just been a family and most of the staff with our court has been, Marcella's been here for 12-plus years, Norma's been here for seven or eight years, and the majority of our staff are long-termers and that's what makes our court real unique. Another privilege has been working with the leadership team and particularly on the one-on-one meetings. Those are the small group meetings. It's such a benefit for the leadership team to really get an opportunity to share our stories and interaction with each other. Another privilege that I've had with the city is being able to attend training and it's such a reward for the city when the employees can take advantage of training in our specific areas because it, all it does is benefit the city. Working with the departments, the police department, the planning department, just a blessing. Judge Richter and I have worked together since forever, seems like since I started, and just a major help and a great person to be able to go to whenever there were major questions and Judge Rosenberg and Judge Champagne as well. So I really appreciate that. But one of my most privileges, privileged feeling that I have is being able to participate with the design of the new courthouse. That was something that most court personnel don't get the opportunity to do, and Marcella and I had the blessing to participate in that. And last but not least, has been able to work with Bill and Patrice. It's just a fantastic opportunity for me, so I appreciate that very much.
Okay, Mike, bring the rock back up here. We got to take a picture.
Really?
Yeah. Really. You can bring one of them or both of them.
And as I'm looking at the legal department, my gosh, bless their hearts. Caroline, I know, I'm sorry. We've kind of put our hands occasionally, but you know, y'all all know how I feel about every one of you guys. This has been a real treat. And thank you. So now we're doing pictures?
Yeah, you're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna hold these like bookends.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
I'll give you the box and we'll get back to the rock.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. All right, Wes.
Is this your speech?
Oh, it's mine.
Oh, it's mine? I thought Wes was going to do this. All right. The Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting is awarded to the City of Missouri City by the Government Finance Officers Association of the States and Canada, which is known as the GFOA, for its comprehensive annual financial reports. This award is the 29th consecutive designation for the City of Missouri City. And let me just say that that's not an easy thing to accomplish, but to accomplish it 29 straight years is an outstanding thing for this city to accomplish and with the people that have made this happen. It's the highest form of recognition in the area of government accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by government and its management. You hear about transparency in reporting government. Well, this is what this award is for. It says that we are transparent in what we report to our citizens. This award of financial reporting achievement has been awarded to the Finance Department and especially to Michael Higgins, Assistant Finance Director, who is primarily responsible for preparing the award-winning CAFR. And the CFFR, as I said, is the certificate of achievement, has been judged by an impartial panel to meet the high standards of the program, including demonstrating a constructive spirit of full disclosure to clearly communicate its financial story and motivate potential users and user groups to read the report. The GFOA is a nonprofit professional association serving approximately 17,500 government finance professionals with offices in Chicago and Washington DC. So as I said, this is a, this is an award that very few people achieve, and we've done it for 29 years with people like Michael and Wes Bella, our Finance Director, and all the people that work in the Finance Department, so...
Wes, Michael. Here, Michael, this is yours, okay?
Just wanted to note that I guess they're trying to do some kind of green or something, but they started doing these in marble and with just little stickers for the year, so we won't get one for each year, so that ought to be interesting.
But I did want to just say...
We ran out of room on the wall.
Yeah. But I just wanted to say this is an award that, that all the departments in the city help us by doing their job every day and reporting to us and back and forth. So it's not just, but Michael does a great job because there's, and all the cities around us, they don't prepare them. Their auditors prepare them and we, we do that in-house. Anyway, good job, Mike.
Very good. All right, item four, our public comments. This is an opportunity for anyone to address counsel on any issue that's not an agenda item, and I have one person, Susan Fox.
Hello.
Hello.
This is the first time in six years.
I know.
I've had the honor of being the dutiful observer of these proceedings for six years, and I just wanted to let everybody know I will not be in my appointed seat on, on every other Monday of the month any longer.
You can still come.
Well, I know I can still come, but it might be nice to be at home on Monday nights.
Okay, you're probably right.
For a while, at least, at least for a little while. I did want to stop by and say goodbye and to thank counsel and staff for everything that you guys have done in support of me with my position with Quail Valley over the last six years. And I will still be around, but I wish everyone well and wish y'all best of luck in all your new initiatives.
Thank you, Susan.
Thank you.
For those that may not know what Susan is referring to, Susan has been a liaison between the residents of Quail Valley through Quail Valley Fund, which is the HOA. She comes to all the meetings, takes minutes, goes to the HOA meetings, takes minutes, and then sends out emails to the 3,500 homeowners who live in Quail Valley, telling them what's happened in council and, and other meetings. And the Quail Valley Fund has changed management company. It's Cecil Willis, who is a city councilman in Stafford, by the way, just retired from the fund after, I think, 29 years he had been working for the fund. And so when it was his retirement, Quail Valley Fund has hired a management company. It's the same management company that does Sienna and Riverstone to take that over, and they have in-house people that are going to be doing what Susan has been doing such a good job at. I hope they do as good a job as what Susan has been doing because not only does she report all those meetings, she is the lost cat, dog, guinea pig, snake, whatever pet it is, somehow ends up, you know, in her yard or somebody calling her saying that they have a lot, that they've lost a dog or they have found a dog. And literally, she had a guinea pig in her backyard for a number, for a number of weeks, I don't know whatever happened to it, but she's the lost pet person too. So I would assume that she may continue to do, be the lost pet person, but anyway, she's done a great job in, in reporting to those portion of the city. So glad she was here tonight. All right, staff reports. I see there are no staff reports. We'll move to item six, is a consent agenda, is our motion to approve the consent agenda as written.
So noted. Do they need to have Development Authority meeting before they...
Councilman Emery made the motion. Mayor Pro Tim White made the second.
You feel comfortable?
All those in favor, motion carriers. Item seven, our public hearings and related actions. Seven A is a public zoning public hearing and ordinance. Seven A one.
An ordinance of the City of Missouri City, Texas, changing the zoning classification of a...[1430.66]
in reporting government. Well, this is what this award is for. It says that we are transparent in what we report to our citizens. This award of financial reporting achievement has been awarded to the finance department and especially to Michael Higgins, Assistant Finance Director, who is primarily responsible for preparing the award-winning CAFR. And the CFFR, as I said, is the Certificate of Achievement, has been judged by an impartial panel to meet the high standards of the program, including demonstrating a constructive spirit of full disclosure to clearly communicate its financial story and motivate potential users and user groups to read the report. The GFOA is a nonprofit professional association serving approximately 17,500 government finance professionals with offices in Chicago and Washington DC. So, as I said, this is a, this is an award that very few people achieve, and we've done it for 29 years with people like Michael and Wes Bella, our finance director, and all the people that work in the finance department. So. Wes, Michael. Here, Michael. This is yours, okay?
Just wanted to note that, I guess they're trying to do some kind of green or something, but they started doing these in marble and with just little stickers for the year. So, we won't get one for each year, so that ought to be interesting. But I did want to just say-
Maybe we ran out of room on the wall.
Yeah. But I just wanted to say, this is an award that all the departments and the city help us by doing their job every day and reporting to us and back and forth. So, it's not just, but Michael does a great job because there's, and all the cities around us, they don't prepare them. Their auditors prepare them, and we do that in-house. Anyway, good job, Mike.
Very good. All right. Item four, are public comments. This is an opportunity for anyone to address council on any issue that's not an agenda item, and I have one person, Susan Fox.
Hello.
Hello.
This is the first time in six years.
I know.
I've had the honor of being the dutiful observer of these proceedings for six years, and I just wanted to let everybody know, I will not be in my appointed seat on every other Monday of the month any longer.
You can still come.
Well, I know I can still come, but it might be nice to be at home on Monday nights-
Okay, you're probably right.
-for a while, at least, at least for a little while. I did want to stop by to say goodbye and to thank council and staff for everything that you guys have done in support of me with my position with Quail Valley over the last six years. And I will still be around, but I wish everyone well and wish y'all best of luck in all your new initiatives.
Thank you, Susan.
Thank you.
For those that may not know what Susan is referring to, Susan has been a liaison between the residents of Quail Valley through Quail Valley Fund, which is the HOA. She comes to all the meetings, takes minutes, goes to the HOA meetings, takes minutes, and then sends out emails to the 3,500 homeowners who live in Quail Valley, telling them what's happened in council and, and other meetings. And the Quail Valley Fund has changed management companies. Cecil Willis, who is a city councilman in Stafford, by the way, just retired from the fund after, I think, 29 years he had been working for the fund. And so, when it, with his retirement, Quail Valley Fund has hired a management company. It's the same management company that does Sienna and Riverstone to take that over, and they have in-house people that are gonna be doing what Susan has been doing such a good job at. I hope they do as good a job as what Susan has been doing, because not only does she report all those meetings, she is the lost cat, dog, guinea pig, snake, whatever pet it is, somehow ends up, you know, in her yard or somebody calling her saying that they have a lot, that they've lost a dog or they have found a dog. And literally, she had a guinea pig in her backyard for a number, for a number of weeks. I don't know whatever happened to it. But she's the lost pet person, too. So, I would assume that she may continue to do, be the lost pet person. But anyway, she's done a great job in, in reporting to those portion of the city. So, glad she was here tonight. All right, staff reports. I see there are no staff reports. We'll move to item six, is a consent agenda, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as written? Councilman Emery made the motion. Mayor Pro Tim White made the second. All those in favor, motion carries. Item seven, are public hearings and related actions. 7A is a public zoning, public hearing and ordinance. 7A1.
An ordinance of the City of Missouri City, Texas, changing the zoning classification of a .556 acre tract of land from LC3 retail district to R1 single-family residential district, amending the zoning district map of the City of Missouri City, adopted by ordinance number 0811 on January 19, 1981, is amended, providing for an amendment to the comprehensive plan, providing for repeal, providing a penalty, providing for severability, and containing other provisions relating to the subject.
This is the first of two readings.
Yes, sir, that's correct. Essentially, this is in conjunction with a recent rezoning that you all heard in that area. After the action was taken by council, that left a small strip of land surrounding that property. And there is also a non-conforming single-family house that was back there as well. And in an effort to clean everything up, staff has brought this before you all for, for consideration.
There are motion.
So moved.
Mayor Pro Tim White made the motion. Councilman Ellen Cat made the second. Is there any discussion? Not will vote. All those in favor, motion carries. Thank you. Item 7A2.
An ordinance of the City of Missouri City, Texas, amending PD Plan Development District Number 56 by excluding a 2.376 acre tract of land, changing the zoning classification of 2.376 acre land from PD Plan Development District Number 56 to LC3 retail district, amending the zoning district map of the City of Missouri City, is adopted by ordinance number 0811 on January 19, 1981, is amended, providing for an amendment to the comprehensive plan, providing for repeal, providing a penalty, providing for severability, and containing other provisions relating to the subject.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
It's not. It's for whatever reason, her slides are not on there, her pictures.
Yeah, unless anyone wants clarification.
It should be on, it's on their screen.
It's pretty simple, it's plain what it is. So.
Okay.
I don't think any of us probably need pictures. Just tell us.
Well, I'll try to describe. This is a request to rezone, as stated, a little over two acre tract off of Texas Parkway, and it would be at the intersection of where Lexington Boulevard would be extended off of Texas Parkway, and it's a request to rezone that portion of land to LC3. It is a straight rezoning request to allow for LC3. The applicant does have intentions to construct a convenience store gas station there, but the request is for LC3 zoning. Staff has recommended to disapprove the request as it's not in conformance with our comprehensive plan or our land use plan for the area. Planning and zoning forwards a negative recommendation for this request, and also had conversations about looking at the entire corridor and design standards for this particular tract. The applicant is here. If the council has any questions or wants anything of them.
Mayor, I move to disapprove this request.
Negative vote.
It's preferred to do it in the affirmative.
Let me restate it. I make a motion to accept the, the planning and zoning recommendation.
I have a question, man. I own a property right across the street, so should I abstain myself from voting or what?
That's up to you, Councilman Wynn. Let me just explain to the applicant, and I'm sure it's been explained to him before, this is, we have a master plan for that tract of land through there, and a Stripes gas station and convenience store is not what the city council's master plan shows to be located at that site. Our, our long-range plans hopefully are to have a nice city-type center there, town center type entity. That's what we work for. That's what we paid for a study for. And I hope that the applicant understands that this is not taken personally towards you. It's just it does not fit our person, it doesn't fit the plan that we had in place for that site. And we got convenience stores and grocery stores and service stations all over the city, but that's not something that this council has stated that they wanted at that location.
My name is Richard Bills, and I'm agent for the seller who's the applicant, and also for Stripes Convenience Stores. And I just, before you consider to vote against this, I would like to just say that on behalf of the seller, as he presented at P&amp;Z, he's owned that property for some 28 years, and nothing has ever developed there. And he feels like this will be sort of a catalyst for some more retail development that's going on there. Stripes is a first-class company based out of Corpus Christi. They would build a store that would hire 30 to 40 employees, full-time employees. They would have a restaurant component to the store. They run a very good operation and are very good people, very community-oriented people. And so, we would just like you to consider approving this rezoning so that we can go forward with their development.
And I, and I guess my response to him is just hang in there. Things are happening. That street needed to go through first, and I think once we see that street, but you, you can go down the street to Guestner and Beltway 8 and see what's happened at Benny Keith and all those. That property's sat for over 30 years. And the same guys that owned it said, "I've sat on it for 30 years, nothing's happened." Tell your seller just to wait. Things, I think, are gonna be in his interest to-
Well, Dr. Frederick's is now 87, and I'm not sure he's gonna be here to see it. So, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. You bet.
I'd like to abstain myself from voting, so should I walk away?
Okay. And the record will indicate that Councilman Wynn has stepped away from the table and is not voting on this issue. Yes, sir?
The only comment that I would like to make is that it's fortunate at this time, and I wish that Councilwoman Ford was here because it's in her district. But it's fortunate at this time that there is activity going on in that area. The primary activity is that Lexington will be extended across Texas Parkway. We've been waiting on that for quite some time. However, I'm of the personal opinion that there, other than just a service station, regardless of how elaborate it will be, there, there can be a lot more lucrative types of businesses to be put in that area.
And I guess-
And if you take a hardcore look at what our planned development is, I think you will see that, that is in line and in tune with, with some of the responses that we've gotten from the citizenry that, that lives in that area.
Thanks. I just wanted to make one point. Dr. Frederick's son is a commercial real estate broker, and he has pitched this site at ICSE, which is the International Council of Real Estate, for 28 years and had no success. And his, his indication was, your master plan calls for a town center here, but you don't have the demographics to support a town center here. You need a high-density daytime and nighttime population, and it frankly just doesn't exist at this intersection. So, you know, he is of the opinion, as a 30-year broker, that it's just not gonna happen. So, he would like to see the opportunity to sell some of his property and spur some additional development.
Very good.
Thanks.
Let him to hang in there, too.
I have a, I have a question for Jennifer. Under the, under the PD, is what they're suggesting, is that something within that they can build there?
Be it a convenience store or the town center?
Yes, the gas station.
The convenience store? No, the PD allows for LC2, and so the gas station portion would not be permitted, and that's the purpose of the application.
So that would not be part of it, anyway?
No.
And the, they talked about a restaurant part of that. Would that be something?
Modifications like a cafe, you know, not a full-blown alcohol sales restaurant.
Thanks.
I do want to point out, in reading the comments from the citizens that appeared before the planning and zoning commission, and it seemed like a lot of the comments was against retail or no more retail or what have you. But we need to make sure people understand the property is already zoned, the underlying zone in this LC2, so retail could go in there without even coming to the planning commission. So I don't want people to be misled and think that this zoning request is being denied solely on basis of what they've said, and we need to be very careful about that. My preference is, is that we have a PD in place, which gives that property a lot of flexibility, and with on, on the land zoning for commercial, which is appropriate for a non-major intersection within our city. And that's more why I would vote no than any particular reason.
Okay. Any other comments? Not will vote. The vote was to, was to accept P&amp;Z's recommendation to not rezone this property. So, all those in favor, motion carries. Item B, or 7B, are public hearings and related actions. There are none. Item A, are appointments. There are none. Item nine, are authorizations. Item 9A is consider authorizing the execution of an inter-local agreement between Fort Bend County and the City of Missouri City for fire protection services. Is there a motion?
Mayor, if I can, this item is, needs to be pulled for further review by my staff.
I'm sorry. I'm going by the agenda that I printed earlier. All right. Item 10, are ordinances 10A.
An ordinance of the City of Missouri City, Texas, changing the name of Tang City Drive, Lo Yang Drive, and Changang Drive, public streets located in the City of Missouri City, Texas, to Dream Court, Peasant Valley Drive, and Pluma Bend Drive, respectively.
There are motions.
Second.
Mayor Pro Tim White made the motion. Councilman Smith made the second. All those in favor?
Is there some indication that this is gonna be, the activity is taking place there?
Well, there, there's some activity already taking place down there.
Yeah.
Yeah, and there, the impetus for this application is Millis Construction. That would be on the south side of the new, of what Lo Yang Drive would be. And they're trying, they're bringing their construction business headquarters from Sugar Land into Missouri City, and so they're the furthest along in terms of development.
How'd you come up with the name Dream Court?
Because they were dreaming.
The owners of the property, actually, they proposed the names, and I think one in particular probably had something to do with it.
It's a good name.
Very good. All those in favor, motion carries. Eleven are resolutions. 11A.
A resolution of the city council of the City of Missouri City, Texas, casting its vote for a member of the Board of Directors of the Harris County Appraisal District for the two-year term commencing on January 1, 2014, and other provisions related thereto.
There are motion. Do we have the name? I know it's the same guy that's, boy, I don't have it in mind.
Ed Heathcott.
Huh?
Ed Heathcott.
Ed Heathcott. There are motion?
So moved.
Second. Mayor Pro Tim White made the motion. Councilman Mann made the second. All those in favor, motion carries. Let me just, we should be getting notice very shortly from Fort Bend CAD as well.
Yeah, we haven't yet, though. But we expect it, I mean, for, because of the same reasons y'all had to do this one relatively quick, you'll have to do that one as well.
And let me just mention that there are five openings on the Fort Bend CAD. There are five candidates for the Fort Bend CAD. One of those candidates is being proposed, actually, two of those candidates are being proposed by the same entity. If we don't pick one of those as our, and cast votes for that person, which I will say is Albert Glover because that's who our nomination is, he will not fill one of those five positions. It's kind of a crazy deal. But if we cast a single vote for him, he automatically wins along with the other four. And there are only five candidates and their five positions. So, we just need to remember that when it comes down to the time when that comes about. You understand what I'm saying? I got a call about that this week and, so. All right, item 11B.
A resolution of the city council of the City of Missouri City, Texas, authorizing the purchase of a range vehicle and the execution of a lease agreement and associated documents for the financing of such range vehicle.
All right. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Councilman Emery made the motions. Are there a second? Second.
Did it go off a bit?
For the range picker?
Yes.
There's a little tighten schedule there.
Is this one the best offer, given the vehicle that was selected?
Based on what?
Based on the condition of the vehicle and the pricing as well.
Based on the condition of-
Well, the, each, each company, we got bids from Yamaha, from Easy Go, and actually with the bid from Club Car, never came back. So, we really officially got two. We only requested three. But for the type of vehicle we were looking for, this was the best for the price, for the value we're getting.
Is this the same company that we bought the last one from?
Yes, and that was a purchase over five years ago.
And that's, and is that the lifespan of the-
That vehicle, as you written in the notes here, has not, has not worked for over a year. Right now, we are receiving a loaner vehicle from that company that they are giving us at no charge.
And as a result of our confidence in that, we're gonna lease another one from them?
Because the warranty on the lease would last longer versus the one-year product warranty at the purchase. So, it would have hopefully less cost involved in that.
Breaks down, they gotta require it.
I understand the math of it, but I'm, but we're going with the same company that didn't give us a good product.
The last vehicle lasted for almost four years, and this lease is for the full four years, at which point we'd be able to turn this in for a brand-new vehicle.
You all right with that?
I'd rather that than have a vehicle sitting in my car barn like I do right now that's, it's just taking up space.
Are they gonna give you anything for that one?
There's been no discussion for that. It's, we could turn that in for metal through Bobby, possibly.
They might give you something for it and rehab it.
Right now, we're actually looking at maybe using some of the parts off the engine for one of our beverage carts that's having a few issues.
Yeah. That's probably one of the most-used vehicles that we have. Probably the one that takes the most beating is trying to ride around the driving range picking up golf balls and-
It gets used every day for many hours per day, and then it does take a beating, not only from the ground but from the golf balls that hit it as well.
But as we've seen with our, our financial report, the driving range is the part of the golf course that makes us a lot of money.
It is a viable part, yes, sir.
And this lease payment is in our existing, but-
It is in, yes, sir. It's actually lower than what we budgeted for this year by approximately $17 a month. As well as the fact that if, if the loaner vehicle gets recalled for any reason, the only vehicle we do have is a, just a regular covered golf cart with the front end that we need, so it does not provide the safety for our employees that this vehicle-
It's where you're hard at. Unless you wanna go out there and do that.
In an armored suit. You know, in an armored suit, yeah. We don't pick.
I know. All right. Councilman Emery made the motion. Councilman Ellen Cat made the second. Yes, you had a question?
But the key here is, is that the lease includes repairs and or replacements.
Yeah, yes, for the, for the warranty period, yes, sir.
Yeah, which we haven't had before. Any other questions? All those in favor, motion carries. All right. We're going to, what, we're going to-
Recede.
Recede and go into-
The LGC one is scheduled to start at 8:00. Y'all have been moving things pleasantly well. So, y'all wanna do the executive sessions first?
We can do, well, the development thing was 7:30.
Yeah, you can do the development authority one.
Let's do the development authority since we're on time for it. So.